Good evening. Welcome to the November 2nd regular Board of Education meeting. Please rise for the pledge. Thank you. Emergency evacuation exits are to the back on either side. Any correspondence that can be posted has been posted. Opportunity for students seeing none. Mr. Gavin, Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. Good luck to our middle school thespians who will be kicking off their fall theater productions with their Broadway review. That starts tomorrow at 4:30. Good luck to all of our middle school performers. That also leads into our high school fall production of Peter and the Starcatcher, which is rapidly approaching with the first show happening Thursday, November 16th. We all look forward to that. That's going to be a good weekend. Athletics playoffs. Congratulations to all of our athletic fall athletes. Our Cyclones have had a busy fall and it is not over, I am proud to say. So far, we have had two teams earning county championships, both the girls cross country four years in a row. They are, I think the seniors have never lost a meet. And our girl soccer team broke the hearts of Garden City last night in a wonderful, wonderful match where we won with a penalty kick. So I am super excited about that. And our swimming and divers are in the county championships. Our golfers have qualified for the spring tournament. Our girls volleyball is in the playoffs as we speak. Boys volleyball, football, and our swim team are in the playoffs tomorrow. Good luck to everyone. Our high school opens house will be held next Monday. We have invited all of our parents and families and students to come and see the comprehensive offerings our high school has to offer for students of any interest and any aptitude. We're really looking forward to that. The high school open house is Monday, November 7th from 7:00 to 8:30. Come learn about RIB program, our science research program, our award-winning music program, music and art programs, our athletic programs, and the plethora of clubs and activities that we also provide for our students. Our parent university was held last Tuesday evening. Thank you to all of our teachers and administrative presenters for putting together an informative and fun evening. The feedback has been overwhelmingly positive about the topics that we chose and the quality of information that we were able to share. One bit of feedback is that the sessions were a little short, which often led a little bit less opportunity for parent questions. So that's one of the things that I know Dr. Moriarty is looking at for next year. Maybe do two sessions, but a little bit longer as opposed to three sessions. But we're really excited about that. Kudos to our curriculum office, Dr. Moriarty, Dr. Dias, Ms. Broderick, and Ms. Broderick for coordinating this event and contributing presentations as well. That is my intro to the report tonight, Madam President.
Thank you. Okay, items for information. Elementary student data report presentation. Mr. Gavin?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We are pleased to welcome our elementary administrative team who will be joined by Dr. Dias here tonight, this evening. Ms. Pike is under the weather, so we wish her a quick recovery. Tonight, we'll be reviewing the academic performance of our elementary students using three key measures. New York State 3-8 assessments, NWEA assessments, and reading benchmarks. We utilize a system of multiple measures to try and generate as comprehensive a perspective about each of our students as we possibly can. The New York State assessments are correlated with the New York State standards and give us a perspective on how our students are measuring up to those standards. I know that in the past, there were many in this community that felt that these tests were developmentally inappropriate. And at the time that the opt-out movement started, that was correct. But I wanted to inform the community that we've had a change in the assessments since that time. So one of the things that was the concern was the length of the assessment back in when the assessments were first changed. It should be noted that the assessments have been reduced from a three-day test to a two-day test. The number of items are dramatically fewer and the amount of writing that you would have needed to have done in the past has also been reduced. So I did want to let everyone know that in the past, while that had been very objectionable in terms of parents having concerns about the developmental appropriateness of the test, most of those concerns, I'm not saying by any means in the imagination that it's a perfect test, but it is something that has been, at least the state has responded to that, to the issues raised by the opt-out movement. It also should be noted that we want to be able to point to our standardized assessments to be able to attract our students' progress. So one of the key things is trying to make sure that you have as representative a sample as possible and trying to make determinations. In our upcoming survey, which will go out, and I'll talk about that in opportunity for superintendent, but in our upcoming survey, I am going to ask our parents and our teachers to prioritize what are the ways that we can measure our own success? And one of those things is how do we measure our NWEA, our reading benchmarks, and our 3-8 testing? So if they're looking, among other measures, but for elementary in this particular context, that's one of the questions that we're going to ask. Our NWEA provides teachers and parents with a longitudinal view of student achievement and growth in both the areas of reading and math. It also provides us with a national perspective. That's something New York State does not do. It does provide us with a national perspective. How do our children here in Rockville Center do relative to the other 4.3 or so elementary, million elementary students that take it nationwide? The last component that you hear a little bit about tonight is our reading benchmarks, our reading benchmarks. Our benchmarking system allows our teachers the opportunity for structured time to listen and assess each of our students as they read. This time, which is three times, this time that's dedicated, which is three times a year, is invaluable because it allows our teachers not to just focus on the outcome, but the process. If there is a lack of comprehension, it's because they've substituted a word or skipped a word. So that time for our teachers to focus on the individual is super important. I'm now going to turn it over to our team of expert educators, and I will ask Mr. Raymar as senior principal to lead us off and introduce the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Gavin. As long as you don't call me old principal, I'm happy.
I just said senior, senior.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to share our elementary data review with the community tonight. During the past year and a half, we have worked tirelessly with one another under the direction of Dr. Moriarty, Ms. Love, and now most recently with Ms. Broderick and Dr. Dias, as we are aligning each one of our elementary schools with assessment data that is cohesive and directly related to New York State standards, New York next-generation learning standards, and grade-level curricula and expectations. This evening, you will learn about the various ways in which we assess our elementary students and how we utilize the data to inform our instruction and for best practices. Our presentation is a temperature check of where we are as a district and where we are headed. This allows us to truly compare apples to apples and not apples to oranges. As someone who's been here for 25 years, it is so remarkable to me, the camaraderie and collegiality that we have with one another and with our central office team, and that ultimately benefits the children in Rockville Center. It's my pleasure to introduce our Coordinator of Teaching and Learning, Dr. Samantha Dias.
Thank you, Mr. Raymar. Good evening, everyone. So we will take a moment to review our New York State assessments, as Mr. Raymar shared our data inquiry process that really allowed us as a team to disaggregate and analyze our data and looking at multiple data points. And so first, we will start with our 3-8 assessments. New York State Education Department has provided us with performance indicators or levels that allows us to kind of determine where our learners are and whether they meet the state standards. So it is a 1 to 4 scale where students who are performing at a level 4 indicates that that student is excelling or exceeding the state expectations for their specific grade level. At level 3, again, these students are meeting the standards, they are proficient in their grade-level standards for their grade and the expectations. Here is a snapshot of our learner participation for the New York State assessments in grades 3 through 5 for ELA and mathematics. These numbers are very similar to the numbers we saw last year in terms of participation. As we begin to take a look at our 3 through 5 assessments, we had an opportunity as a team to compare our performance to the region. And so for ELA, in grades 3 and 5, we found that our learners exceeded region expectations and exceeded the region as a whole. In grade 4, our students were right on par with the region, performing slightly above. For mathematics, in grades 3 and 5, again, our students are exceeding the region, and for ELA, I'm sorry, for math 4th grade, our students were slightly below the region. In terms of looking at our data, this provided an opportunity for us to really do a deep dive and utilizing the tools that readily available to us in order to really examine opportunities where we are really strong and opportunities for growth. And so we utilize tools from NASA Bosse's warehouse, and looking at the item analysis allowed us to compare ourselves to the region, taking a look at the gap report, which allowed us to take a look at our curriculum implementation, and then, again, thinking about those instructional pedagogies that are currently utilized in our classrooms, and then lastly, taking a look at the wrong answer analysis, which, again, we were able to further understand our student errors, and then thinking about opportunities for growth. So in terms of our grade 3 through 5 assessments, some opportunities where we can continue to strengthen and work our constructed responses and determining meaning. In terms of strengths, our learners did very well with multiple choice assessment questions and items, as well as really understanding knowledge and ideas. And so as we continue to work around enhancing these areas, we have developed an action plan where our learners are able to participate in our knowledge-based curriculum where our assessment questions will mirror the New York State assessment items. We are also ensuring that our students have ample practice with computer-based testing, and so these new assessments that we are developing within our district allow our learners to continue that work. In order to support work around determining meaning of words, we are currently investigating word study approaches that support meaning of words as well as writing from reading. Again, this is an ongoing process, a year-long process, that allows us to really make more informed decisions. This is the very first time that our students are taking computer-based testing in grades 3 through 8, and so it's exciting because here's an opportunity where we have baseline data, where we can really think about how we can transform teaching and learning, as well as ensuring that our outcomes for learners continue to provide opportunities for enrichment and growth. And now I'd like to introduce the Principal of Riverside Elementary, Mr. Christopher Zapia.
Thank you, Dr. Dias. As Mr. Gavin mentioned before, the NWA MAP test is an adaptive achievement test that allows educators and parents to measure student performance and growth. The test creates a personalized assessment experience by adapting to student responses in real time. In RVC, our students take this test in both ELA and mathematics. They take it three times a year in the fall, winter, and the spring. When analyzing data to shape our instructional approach, the emphasis is always on student achievement and growth from fall to spring. First thing that I'd like to share with you is how our students in RVC compare to national norms. Allow me to walk you through this visual. You'll notice the first bar labeled "national norms" shows 25% of students in the nation achieve in the top quartile, which is indicative of high academic achievement. 50% of students in the U.S. are in the middle two quartiles, and 25% achieve at the lowest quartile. The RVC graphs indicate that 40% of our learners achieve in the top 25% range. This is well above the national norm, while only 8% of our learners are in the lower quartile. As you can see, RVC learners are displaying high achievement compared to their national counterparts, and that's something to be celebrated. As I mentioned earlier, NWEA assessments are designed to measure student achievement and growth throughout a school year. These graphs indicate student RASH unit scores or RIT scores for grades 1 through 5 for the Fall 2022/Spring 2023 school year in ELS. You'll notice that in each grade, RVC learners exceed national norms. The same can be said for the math RIT scores on the next slide. High achievement is clearly an area of strength for RVC learners. You'll also notice steady growth from fall to spring. With that said, our administrative team has indicated that this is an area that we believe can be further developed. In RVC, we recognize the need to continue to challenge and enrich our students, to promote student growth. We are addressing this through curriculum development and strategic scheduling. This year, in addition to our 80-minute ELA and math block periods, we are implementing 40-minute win periods, also known as a "what I need" period, where each student receives instruction based on what they need at that moment in time. So what does this look like, this win period? There's no new instruction occurring. Within this structure, we are working towards creating opportunities where all learners are being provided the correct level of instruction. During this time, identified Tier 3 students may receive additional services outside of the classroom for progress monitoring purposes. At the same time, this will also provide an opportunity for teachers to further challenge and enrich our students based on their own academic needs. The goal is to have all students, all students, receive instruction at their appropriate challenge level as a means to promote growth along their learning journey, and this structure will allow us to do just that. Thank you for your time, and I'm going to turn it over to Principal Duffy from Wilson School. He's going to talk to you about benchmarking process.
As the district moves to further align all five elementary schools with their curriculum and assessments, both vertically and horizontally, one of the major achievements last year was in universal reading benchmarking. All students in grade K to 5 were benchmarked using the same assessment benchmarking platform by either their classroom teacher, reading teacher, or special ed teacher. Teachers had the opportunity to read orally with students and focus on their word identification, fluency, and reading comprehension. These benchmarks were then used to allow teachers and students to work within the zone of proximal development for the student and help create strategic plan for the learner with our structures of small group reading, vocabulary, word study, comprehension, and book talks. Reading benchmarks were used to estimate student reading levels, to help teachers make homogeneous reading groups, and targeted small group instruction levels, to help make decisions on students' Tier 2 and Tier 3 reading support groups, and to chart student progress over time. They also give parents a snapshot of where the student is and give the parent reading levels for their child. Here we see a graph that shows how our students did on these benchmarks. The green and the yellow indicate that students either exceeded or met grade-level expectations, and the orange and the red show that students were either approaching the grade-level expectation or below the grade-level expectations. Many of our students in this graph you see in grades 1 through 5 exceeded grade-level expectations and norms or were on grade level. All of the students in Rockville Center in grades K to 5 also receive small group reading instruction on a daily basis. Through these groups, students receive individualized instruction, have meaningful literary discussions with peers and with their instructors, build vocabulary and comprehension skills, make reading and writing connections, and teachers provide conferences and feedback to students in real time. And now I'll turn things over to Mrs. Pascarella from Watson.
Okay, so what lies ahead of us is really where the exciting work takes place. The ongoing collection and analysis of this data is going to lead us to these informed decisions about what programs we use, how we deliver instruction, and how successful our students are at accessing that instruction. Collaboratively with our teachers, these next steps, we continue to engage in root-cause analysis, decisions around delivery of curriculum and instruction, as well as looking at the effectiveness of our interventions. Involving all of the stakeholders and utilizing multiple forms of data collection provide us with that comprehensive understanding of our areas of strength and our opportunities for growth. And reviewing the data through multiple lenses provide information both at a broad and granular perspective. We look at things through the district level, individual schools, grade levels, teachers, and specific students. Our focus, however, is to keep the whole student in mind, not just the numbers and percentiles, and that keeps them at the forefront of our work. And it's our teachers, who are our most valuable resource, who will use this data to work on committees to review curriculum, like they did last year with ELA and this year with math. They will both implement curriculum and curriculum programs, like our inquiry-knowledge-based curriculums, as well as programs like Hegarty and Foundations. They will provide input to decisions around programs, like the ongoing investigation currently of research-based word study programs. And they're going to continue to provide interventions through MTSS that support and extend learning opportunities for our students. Professional learning around tiered instruction meets the needs of correct levels of difficulty for all of our learners. It supports and stretches their learning when and where they need it. And as Chris mentioned earlier, that happens during our win period, which has been a great addition to all the buildings and further underscores our commitment to provide alignment and shared experiences for all of our elementary students. The teachers work daily with students and collect their own summative and formative assessment data, and that they use that to further make decisions around their classrooms and students. So with the guidance from Dr. Moriarty, Dr. Dias, the collaboration between and among all of the building principals, and the professional learning support for Mrs. Broderick, engaging in this work around data with our teachers will continue to move us forward in providing experiences that target student needs and continue to provide positive learning experiences for all of our learners. Thank you so much.
Madam President, I have a couple of questions to make before I turn it over to the board for a question. So, a couple of things. First and foremost, I think it's clear to say that we definitely have some work to do, so you guys can all stand up so we don't have like popcorn effect going on over there. But it's clear to say that we still have some work to do. I'm really happy to hear that for the first time, that our benchmarks are actually the same system across the five elementary buildings. That's important to me to hear. The other thing that I wanted to just point out, a few other things that I wanted to point out. First and foremost, when, I just want to clarify, when we, when NWEA talks about quartiles, they're just basically taking 100% of the students that take the test and then establishing like 25%, 25%, 25%. How's that work, Jim?
So the NWA quartiles, millions of students across the country take the NWA, so they're taking national norm numbers. So they take everyone who took the NWVA, divide it up into the top 25%, bottom 25% and 50 in the middle, and that's the national number, and then we get the same data but on a smaller scale for our district. And that's where this came from. So you see where students across the country, 25 out of every 100 students are scoring in the 75% bracket, we have 40 students out of every 100 scoring in that zone. But to me, and I think to all of us, a little bit more importantly, is at the bottom where only 8% of our students are falling into that 25% zone, which shows that we're identifying, targeting, and giving support to our neediest students.
Great. Thank you for that answer. The next question I have is, we talked about the district as a whole, but as elementary principals, when you go back to your buildings, you know, I just want to clarify for the board and for the public watching, that we have conversations down to the teacher and down to the student within our individual buildings. Is that correct? Is that a fair assumption to say?
Yeah. So once we go back to our buildings, we meet with teams of teachers, our reading teachers, math specialists, we bring classroom teachers in, we look at a lot of the same reports and engage in the work that we, you know, currently did. Inevitably, teachers want to know, what did my kids do? How did my students perform? Conversations sound and look like this. Teachers are sitting around and I say, wait a minute, I didn't do so great on this question. How did you teach that? What was the topic? You know, what was the instructional decision that you made? And that's where a lot of those best practices and shared decisions come in and make the changes, you know, in real time for our teachers.
And so we may have slight differences in the trends across different buildings or different teachers, that we have those individual conversations either as a grade level or with the teacher. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that for people watching. The other thing I wanted to talk about or get your perspective on is the win period is a new initiative, right? It's a new initiative. So eight weeks in, are we where we want to be with, is it like a completed work or are we still evolving at this point?
We're definitely still evolving. The win, so it came in, it's coming in different stages. Over the summer, every single principal scheduled in these win periods for every single teacher, so teachers have those win periods available. One of the major pieces involved in the win period was to make sure that students weren't being pulled out for reading and math services and missing instruction of another kind from their core instruction. So that is in place also, and now we're working with our teachers, whether sometimes through stellar teachers, sometimes through grade-level meetings, to have the teachers make that period as productive as possible for the students who are in the room. So while they're not giving them new instruction in, say, math, ELA, science, and social studies, the students will have their own goals, their own personal goals, and their own targeted instruction to meet them where they are for what they need. Teachers at different grade levels are at different levels for that, but we're working in that.
Right. So this, as in any new initiative, eight weeks in, we don't have things mastered yet, right? We have the structure, we've set the conditions for success, and we're still working with all of our different faculty members to get that.
Absolutely. We hope to be in a much different place next year than we are right now.
Great. My last, oh, go ahead.
I want to also say that one of the things we did was change the way that we provide our music lessons to our students. So rather than every day 3 at 10:25, all trumpets were going out of their classrooms and being taught trumpet lessons, now it's a rotating schedule. So on day 3, when the music teacher's in the building, on the, on day, they might have it at 9:45 the first day, first week, the second cycle. have it at 9:45 the first day, first week, the second cycle, 10:25, then the third cycle, 11:05. They're never missing the same thing again and again. And this, again, provides us an opportunity so kids are not missing any new instruction.
Great. That, I know that's a challenge, music, music lessons at the elementary level, especially if you're sharing music staff, is always a scheduling difficulty, so I appreciate that work. My last question is more of like a philosophical question, and feel free for anyone to kind of jump in. When we have three different pieces of data on each student, you know, what happens if we see a New York State test that happens to be at a level four, our student doesn't necessarily take NWEA and meet their growth target, and then the benchmark is somewhere in the middle? How do we view this and how do we have a conversation with teachers about taking a look at disparate data sources that may not always correlate?
So although, as I mentioned earlier, data tells a really good story and a comprehensive story, there are always outliers, and that is why we keep the child at the forefront. I think we could all attest to that when you talk to an elementary school teacher about a child in their class, they know them. That data validates, it supports, it shows specific areas to target that we can, again, help stretch or support students as they need. We have meetings regularly with our teachers where we discuss how we are going to implement interventions and part of our MTSS process. We sit with our teachers, our support staff, we look at those multiple points of data, we talk to the classroom teacher, we share narratives, we talk about, you know, the things that data can't account for, you know, maybe trouble in a household, or maybe a sick parent, or, you know, maybe a big family trip that happened right before a point of assessment.
The New York State test, right.
That's right. So we look at all of those factors, we look at a child's, you know, mental health and how they handle a stressful situation. And that is where the data from the classroom teachers becomes really important in the process so that we can provide them what they need in each of those topics.
Great.
Also, the NWEA for some of our students can give data points from kindergarten all the way to fifth at three different points throughout the year. So if you're talking about a fifth grader, I have 18 NWA scores easily charted over time. So outliers happen, and they happen to every student, but we have plenty of data to look at, not just this year, not just this semester's.
So my last question is, you know, I know it's been a while since Rockville Center has had, you know, some training on NWEA in terms of having someone come in, and we've had a lot of new teachers since then. So that might be something that we want to look forward to so that we can make sure that our teachers have, because NWEA continually changes too. There are new reports, there are new things to look at. I know we're all very familiar with it, but we want to make sure that we get that out to our faculty and we make, we go over some of the things that that tool can do so that our teachers can speak to it with parents when the parent gets a test score, a test result. So that would be one of my other things, Dr. M., I'm looking at you now, Dr. M., to schedule so that we can work with our elementary principals on doing something like that. We'd be happy to, and by the way, thank you very much for all the work. Thank you. Appreciate it. Madam President.
Thank you all for being here. We love having our elementary team. And Dr. Diaz, it's so nice to have you, working with them and presenting here tonight. Before I go through my comments, I'll turn it over to the board for their comments and questions.
Thank you. I agree. And to Ms. Pasquarella's point, you know the students in your buildings, so it really is important for you to come and present all of this information to us as a board. I had a couple of questions. You mentioned that the New York State tests are computer-based now, and so the NWEA are also computer-based, yet NWEA is adaptive. Are the New York State tests adaptive at this point? Do you expect that they might ever go that way?
They're not. I don't know if they will go that way. It certainly doesn't seem like it over the next couple of years. Their tests are more standardized, every student gets the same exact assessment, but there's value to that also.
Thank you. And on one of the slides where we were looking at the New York State results, there was a comparison by region. Can you, can you define that region for us a little bit? Is that not?
It would be Nassau County, not state overall, but Nassau County.
Okay, so not just towns near us geographically, but?
No, the region would be all of Nassau.
Okay. And could we break that out by New York State, or is that, if we?
We have it by New York State. Our data would be even more favorable against the whole state than it would be against the region, and we thought that the region was more appropriate.
Okay, thank you. And to Mr. Gavin's point, as when he introduced you, thinking back a few years ago when parents really were concerned about the length of the test and the opt-out movement really grew, I think maybe at one point we had 50% of students taking the test, so now we're at more like 70 to?
Less than that, yeah, less than that.
Even less than half.
Based on the grade, but fifth grade, let's say 40% of the kids would take it, 60 opt-out, and we almost had 70% take it this year.
Okay. And I, it seemed like, yeah, between 70 and 80 is pretty roughly where we are.
The auditoriums were packed.
So I think part of that was, was the length of the test and whether or not they were developmentally appropriate, but then there was a sort of feeling that, are they valid? Are they reliable? And so I guess I would ask that question to you as well. As one point of data, right, as one in a constellation of multiple measures of assessment, we feel confident that these New York State tests as administered today, computer-based but not adaptive, are providing a valuable data point?
They are, and I feel like they really are, aside from the outliers, very indicative of where students are many times. You know, the tests have gotten more targeted, less, you know, less is more. So the fact that the students in third grade were reading these ridiculous passages, and now they're reading passages that are appropriate for them, really gives us, I think, a very good understanding of them. But again, it's one piece of the big puzzle.
And to follow up, you know, there are some times where we will read a test passage or we'll read a question, and they always do one, like metaphysical poem where, you know, some of the kids will struggle with like the metaphysical poem. We want to, that's also done intentionally so that you can kind of get a sense of who can make that lead to that next, next level. So there's always some sort of an issue that you can kind of point to, but as a construct, they've certainly gotten better from where they were.
And also, there are two ways to look at it, right? You can look at how students perform, but it also is a great test to look at instructional decisions because they release questions and passages. So we can go back and we can actually look at the cohort of students, how they answered, where most of them got questions wrong, what did they choose, how are we teaching it? So it really works twofold. As much as it gives us information about students, it also gives us information about instruction. So that is one of the definite benefits of the New York State test.
Good. That's good to hear. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for being here and for providing all this information. I have a couple of follow-up questions also. On the topic of opt-out, I do think it's important that we get as much data as possible. So I don't know if this is for you or more for Mr. Gavin, do we have any plan or intention for how we're going to try to, more so, I think, at the middle school, we see a drop-off of participation. But I know back in the day, when the movement started, I feel like parents were very well-informed as to why they were opting out. I feel like now it's more just become habit, and so I'm just curious if we have a plan for trying to up those numbers a little bit.
So first is to take a look at the responses for how people respond on the survey about what's important to them in terms of measuring our success. So test scores are part of that. So that's the first thing, is to get that data, share it with the board, share it with the public. The next step after that is to go to PTAs again in the springtime and just remind everyone that some of the concerns that have been happening in the past are no longer as valid as they were back in the day. So that piece is also a component of getting out to each of the individuals. Third, there has to be communication from myself and from the principals about the tests are here and they help us build a program. So they have to see value to the assessment so that people will, will opt into it. You know, the middle school is a little bit tougher to, to try to kind of overcome that hurdle because it's, there's a big, a big switch to, grades are becoming very more, becoming more important. And then when they're in eighth grade, they don't take, you know, the math, the eighth grade math assessment, they take the regions, the vast majority of our students. So the priorities somewhat switch. So there's part of that as well. Now, the other thing, the wild card that seems to be out there right now is that New York State on the 13th of November is going to come out with their roadmap to, to new graduation requirements. Now, do I think that's going to have a dramatic impact on the students that are currently in the high school? Probably not. But it will have an impact on our students in the middle school, and one of the arguments is that as we see what these new requirements are, we need to make sure that we have information about our current middle school and elementary students to make sure they're prepared for these new requirements. So that's another kind of way to utilize that data in the context of the change that's coming.
And just so I'm clear, are the students who have IEPs, do they, they get extended time and all their accommodations, right, for the New York State test? So I think that was another frustration for parents, that a two-day test for a special ed student with an IEP becomes a four-day test, right?
An onerous experience.
Right. And I know there's no way that, oh, sorry.
None of the state tests are timed anymore, and over the last couple of years, they did away with the times for any students, but students who have IEPs get all of their accommodations on the state test.
Okay.
And we also, you know, try to make a pragmatic decision. If a student's been there for, you know, four hours taking a test that should take 40 minutes, we have conversations, and I'm not willing to sacrifice their health or well-being to finish, you know, the second constructive response kind of thing, so.
Okay.
We have that conversation with, with the student and, you know, with the parent prior so that if we know that a child typically takes double the time or triple the time, we might say to the, to the parent, what do you think? Like if he goes four hours, do you want me to cut it off, or do you want, where do you want me to stop? And we certainly don't want our students to reach a frustration point. Occasionally, there's going to be a frustration that somebody feels frustrated they can't read a passage, or, you know, they're struggling with a passage, but we try to equip them with the, with the resilience to kind of get through that. But we also work with students individually that may have needs that we want to make sure are addressed.
Right. So that, that is like a concern, and I'm glad that that's on the radar. Do we have any, like, trends in terms of who is opting out or who is opting in that we've noticed?
We have several trends. Number one, the biggest trend is that in third grade, 80% of our kids take the test. By eighth grade, way less, way, way, way less. So about half of the kids are taking the test. So we know that one of the trends is as they get older, our opt-outs increase. And again, I think it's about a priority for middle school students that, that grades seem to be at that point more important than what they get on these tests. Part of that is cultural, part of that is age-specific, you know, I don't know many eighth graders that'll be like, yeah, I can't wait to take the New York State test. There's not too many of them. But if we incentivize them and tell them that this is important for us to understand where you are as a learner, most of our eighth graders and middle school students will rise to that occasionally.
Okay. Other than, than that, though, is there anything like accounting for the numbers? Like are our stronger students opting out, or are weaker students opting out, or is it kind of a mixed bag?
It's kind of a mixed bag. I wouldn't want to tell you that it's, you know, a whole bunch of fours that are opting out, are students that would typically get a four. Do we have students that would typically get a four or a three that opt out? Yes. Do we have a couple of students that might get a one or a two that opt out? Yes. I would say predominantly that if it was skewed one way or another, the threes and the fours are more likely to opt out than the ones and the twos in terms of, in terms of the percentage. Could I give you an exact percentage? No.
Okay.
And also on the building level, what I see just with my own eyes, sometimes it's attached to friend groups. So Bobby and Fred opt out, you know, Arnold puts pressure on his mom opt out too. So it does work that way sometimes.
I've been on the, I've been on the receiving end of that, so.
Hope there's no Arnold out there right now.
There's no Arnold. I was saving Arnold's mom.
Just double-checking. Brady Arnold's at Wilson, we're sorry, we're sorry.
So I do, I do have a couple more questions. One of the things that's confusing to me is it seems that our New York State assessment performance doesn't exactly, I, I understand individual students, but just broadly speaking, our three and four numbers together on the New York State assessments, right, are in the, you know, 60 to 70% range, right? But our NWEA scores seem better than that, and our benchmarking scores seem better than that, just as a general rule. So can you speak to why that might be the case?
Sure. Here, when we're talking about the NWEA data, these are nationally normed scores, so we're being compared to students from all over the country, so North Dakota, South Carolina, and the same thing would happen with benchmarking for reading. But when we look at the state test, not only these state scores, we're also comparing ourselves to the region and other schools in Nassau County. So that could be why our numbers look better nationally, which they do, than they would locally.
Okay.
And also to that point, though, years ago in Nassau County, the highest-performing districts, everyone was at 90%. It's a little over the top. So we're not, like, when it says 76% in grade three, it's not like all these other districts are 85 and 90%. I mean, the numbers are pretty similar countywide. That's not to say that we can't up our game and everyone can cut up their game, but also BOSI's now grades the tests and it's done computer-generated. So that's also been a change over time. So there's so many different trends over time. That's where, so don't, don't be scared that only 76% are at level three and four. That's not unusual at all.
And also to speak to that, sorry, Mr. Gavin, this is saying 76% of our third graders are reading at or above grade level, and I'm pretty sure that's what this is saying too. So if I'm looking at my third grade here, I have 20 and 53, that's about the same percentage. So the data looks, the data looks the same. It's showing that 70% of our students are at or above grade level with about 30% under, and that's the same thing that the state data is telling us. The NWBA isn't showing that kind of data. It's showing more nationally-meant averages of what students score at a particular age level.
Okay.
Sorry, one more piece of that. All three tests that we're talking about measure the standards slightly differently. Some are you read a lengthy passage and you answer multiple-choice questions or construct a response. Some are shorter passages, and those are adaptive based on your level. Some are in front of a teacher where you're asking questions and having a conversation. So there's also that piece of it that could alter, again, the methodology of how the test is given, could have an effect on kids' responses as well.
So, I'm sorry, but just to clarify, so like for a constructed response, while our students have taken the NWEA on the computer for a long time, they've never had to really type in an extended response, so this was kind of like the first time in the New York State test that they've done that? That's one thing that we have to practice at. I know that we talked about that as a whole, that that's something that's consistent across the board and across the grade levels, is that we would not, based on our multiple-choice, we would not expect our students with constructive response scores that would be lower as, the difference would be too, too much for us to kind of reconcile without taking a look at it and diving into it instructually, if that makes sense.
It does. So I appreciate the idea that we're teaching the whole child, right, and that these are just parts of, of the bigger picture. What I'm interested in is any thoughts on how we can, first, let me ask, I think these results are similar to our results last year, give or take, right, in the same range? So can you talk a little bit about how we can try to like up our, maybe what, what would be called on like the high school-level mastery rates, like the level fours, and, and maybe push some of our level twos a little bit up into the, I feel like we're focusing on, between MTSS and the WIN period, I think it's amazing that we're really focused in on, A, individual students, and B, in particular, students who need support, but I would like to see us push a little bit more to get some, some kids further into that more mastery category.
Yeah, I think you're right. I think we all agree with you. I think that the data shows us that we do a good job, like you said, of identifying students who struggle, and it's time now to push the vast majority of our students a little bit higher. That's why we formulated fifth grade, fourth grade, third grade curriculum-writing committees so that we could look at what are all of our students getting in the tier-one sector for ELA, combining social studies, science, high-level vocabulary, different comprehension skills, coming up with a universal plan from K to five to teach comprehension through different styles of graphic organizers, different, all different methods, research-based methods, and having a more rigorous curriculum for everybody in the classroom at grades K to five so that all of our learners are pushed, and then we support the learners who are falling behind.
And again, at the WIN period, we talk about supporting, but we also talk about stretching. So those are opportunities to really hone in on students at every level and make sure that they're getting pushed at their appropriate level. So amongst these different points of data, it allows us, again, to get to that granular level and look at the students in our classroom. level and look at the students in our classroom, and to be able to use the win period to really push and extend learning in, in a myriad of ways. And that's been, again, that's, that's what we're starting with, and that's the crux of a lot of the conversations with teachers, is when we look at this data, what does it tell us and what do we do with it? And really focusing in equally as much on the high, the middle, and the low throughout that, you know, that period, as well as other targeted instruction, push-in supports from specialists that happen, you know, during our ELA and math blocks, is, is another opportunity to really, again, not just support learners, but also help stretch them.
Great, thank you. Last question. So in that similar vein of conversations amongst teachers, being able to really inform how individual students are taught, and I'm assuming the answer is yes, but I'll just double-check, are you, are they also talking in between grades, so as kids are moving from third to fourth to fifth, sharing? I know, I know you talk about students all the time, and, and I think, Ms. Pesquale, you're right, that, I mean, every one of my students, individual teachers, has known them so well in all the years that they've gone through Riverside, but how, how are we facilitating those conversations as they move through the grades to make sure that they're really focused on, on what those individual students need?
So the answer is we, we do it, we probably can do it more, especially moving from the elementary to the middle school or jumping schools, which we have started doing last year and have done in a bunch of different places. Yes, our first-grade teachers talk to the second-grade teachers, second talks to third. We can do more of it, though, we could do a better job with it, but also knowing where the middle school is and, and needs us to be, that's been very helpful, too, for us driving some instruction.
And I know that, I don't know if it's happened yet, Mr. Gavin was meeting with a bunch of sixth graders to kind of ask them how the transition was from fifth to sixth grade, which I think is an amazing thing, because kids really are the ones who will tell you. We could all say what we want, but the kids know how they feel when they get to the next level. So I think that that's another way to help, that, once he gets the information from them to filter down to us, which will be very important.
I did, I met with them on Wednesday, so I was going to talk about that at the end, but, okay, thanks, Dee.
And I think one last piece to your point, because as we're all talking, we have those conversations often, but I do think we probably focus more on what kids need at the lower levels and how to support them, and I think that it's a really good time to shift using the collaboration that's happened between and among the buildings in developing curriculum and professional learning, to really shift that focus and have the conversation at both ends of the spectrum. So I appreciate the comment, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody, welcome. Nice to see Mr. Zappia here, making his principal debut, welcome. And Dr. Diaz, thank you, always so nice to have you as well, and of course, our veterans, thank you so much for your work, and Mrs. Pryke, hope you're doing well. Just one comment on the opt-out. I would imagine it's going to continue to trend down. Also, it's a generational thing as well.
Yep.
I think that parents who have middle schoolers, that might be their youngest child, and their oldest children are high schoolers or they're out of school, and they were part of that real opt-out movement that initiated many years ago in like 2013 period of time. So I think that it will continue to trend down as the newer generation of parents come in, which will help, to Janet's point, get us more data, so just a comment on that. Similar to way that we stack data on a student, so we're looking at a student, and we're looking at all three marks, I think would be really helpful, instead of having to keep going back and forth, but just look at the grades stacked, because I think then it might inform some trends happening within the grade. And then I would add to that the longitudinal look on the grades, because we did this sort of similar presentation last year, so I would want to know the current fourth graders that, we're looking at some numbers that are a little, you know, maybe not the strongest of, of the three to five right now on, on some of this data, what do they look like as third graders? So I would definitely want to take a look at charting these grades one over the other to see how they're progressing as a grade.
I think that's an excellent point, and actually, our new platform, Branching Minds, does just that. That will allow a high school teacher to look back for many years. Again, it gives you a clear picture of each child, where they were in third grade, fourth grade, and that will be a great way of just looking at data and longitudinally where we're going, and where a student is, having a good year, not such a good year, or if it's a trend.
Right. If we could, whoever we're kind of sharing this with internally, I think that would be helpful for them to see, because I think also, to be fair to the teachers, they do know their students now in this snapshot in time, but it would give them some wider data for, to inform them, well, how was the student doing last year? Or if I'm an eighth-grade teacher and I'm looking at ELA state tests, you know, I would love to see that track from three to eight, so if the student's, you know, not opting out. But anyway, NWA, they're taking it generally, it doesn't seem like people are opting out still, I'm so happy to see that. So if we can start to look at things in that manner, I think that would be helpful to everybody, because this is really good information, but I feel like we're always looking at it kind of now, and then we're going to look at it again next year, but maybe we can tie it together.
We can make a note of that for our report for next year, and we do have access to that information. We do some of that, and we will be sharing with our fourth-grade team, let's say, how not only did their students do last year, but how did the up-and-coming third graders do? But that is an interesting study that we need to look at.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And then lastly, about the computer-based testing, so I know in third grade with NWA it changes from the test being read to them, and I remember, I'll never forget, when my son's headphones didn't work in kindergarten, and he got like, he bombed it, and the teacher was like, I don't know what happened. So they go through these things, like you said, outliers, things that happen, but then in third grade, it ticks up, and I know sometimes the NWA scores come down in third grade because now they're reading the test versus having it read to them. This is at the same moment now that they're starting to take a computerized state test, so this third grade is really the, the, the time where it's happening. So it's a Dr. Diaz's point of trying to get them on a computer, computer-based testing before. Are you suggesting that because they have access to Chromebooks in first and second grade, are we starting to assess them using a computer?
So while we're not, I wouldn't want to say we're assessing the students on the computer, but they certainly have kindergarten, first, second have Chromebooks, they have the stellar program every other day in all the buildings, they're using those Chromebooks, getting, even in kindergarten, just logging on to a Chromebook, learning how to type a little bit, so we have typing programs. So we're just preparing them little by little, so that by the time they're in second grade, they are ready to do some typing, and they're ready to tackle this in third grade, and they have the whole year of third grade to get used to it, to start typing, typing shorter responses and long responses on the computer. And we do have programs like Castle Learning that allow teachers to set up some kind of mock test or some kind of assessment that the students could type into, and then it'd be computerized graded.
But, I mean, I think that's great, and I think in the second half of second grade, if we could start introducing something, because NWA in third grade hits quickly. We don't have like the whole year until the state test comes out, but maybe some sort of, you know, just some way of having them feel comfortable using that system in second grade might be helpful to help us get our third grade done with fidelity.
We use a phrase that, that any evaluation period should be old and familiar, not new and different.
Right.
So it's using things like Castle Learning, even just to ask comprehension questions about a reading, and give it to them in a way in which that they're going to see it when they do get in front of these tests, so that there's a comfortable, comfortable approach to it, that, that is starting to happen.
That's great, thank you. That was it for me. Thank you so much, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you for your time and for the presentation. I, I really appreciate the work that's been done in this district over the last two years, you know, in looking at not only our curriculum, but also looking at our practice and how we're engaging with students in the classroom through instruction and through assessment. You know, I, it, I mean, it's obviously no secret that the scores, the scores for me that I'm seeing are low. And I get that these, the scores are not reflective, per se, of the work that we've been doing. They're reflective of years of what's been going on in the district, and a lot of the changes that we have are new, and we're not seeing the direct impact of that yet. My concern really is in looking at the scores where we have between 25 and 35% of our students in ELA and/or math in grades three through five are not showing that they are proficient in foundational standards. That's like, that's, to me, it weighs heavy on me as a parent and as an educator, that this, these are the foundational years, and if we're not mastering or even proficient in the standards at, at this point in time, what does that mean going forward, and how are we addressing that going forward? The mastery rates are also concerning, especially knowing this district and how the district values rigor at the middle level and at the high school. So I have concerns about that. That's not to say that I don't appreciate that we are trying to address those concerns. I don't think these numbers reflect the potential of this district, and it, it makes me wonder why. Why are we not seeing the results that I think we should be seeing from our students, from our teachers, who are dedicated professionals, from our administrators, like, we're doing the work, why are we not getting the outcomes? So it makes me wonder, you know, there's a focus on, on what our students are doing, like, listening to the presentation, we can look at the questions, we know what they're not getting correct, or where the proficiency is lacking. But I wonder, are we thinking, how much we thinking about why? Why does, why do they not understand what's going on with their learning, that when it comes to taking these tests, which I guess it's a once-a-year test, it can be a great day, it can be a terrible day, but to have that many students not showing proficiency, it really just begs the question, what is going on with the learning that they're not able to produce that performance? The fourth grade scores are considerably concerning, these are our current fifth graders, they are going to middle school next year. I have concerns with, with that. So again, get, going back, back to the why, looking at our curriculum, I know we're doing curriculum reviews, I know we focused on ELA last year, and there's a lot of great, great changes that we're making, especially at the kindergarten level, the first-grade level, and through the elementary, and I'm sure that we will see that pay off, you know, in the years to come. I'm happy that we're looking at math. Some other questions that I wonder, in elementary school, as a parent, from a parent lens right now, when I get, you know, my child's test home, I have a test in front of me with questions on it, I'm not a fourth-grade teacher, let's just say I have a fourth grader, which I don't, i- is it worth naming what questions go with what standards to make sure that we're addressing the standards? And then me, as a parent, that I can see, oh, my child struggled on this standard, and I know that you took a great amount of time, Dr. Moriarty, Dr. Diaz, to make that parent portal, where I can go on, I can look at standards, I can hook my kid right up into the, the program, I can look at the standards specifically and give them more practice as a parent. So I think how we're informing parents to help see where their children are and how they can be better supported at home. And I also wonder, too, about, you know, professional learning, I know we've talked about professional development, that we're, we're designing new, teachers are coming in, but how are we making sure that we're hitting everyone? And I know that time is a scarce resource, I know that substitutes are scarce, but I wonder a lot about that, too, how we can really effectively get our teachers in to do the learning, so that we have the output that this, I know this district is capable of.
So I just want to hit on a couple of, of those points, if I can. First, your points are all extremely well-taken. I think one of the things, when the board set out to build systems, so when we talk about co-teaching, when we talk about MTSS, when we talk about curriculum review, those are all systems designed to unleash the talent of our teachers. So your comment about our teachers are all experts and well-meaning and, and, and talented and care about our kids, I think those systems are designed to let those ideas cross-pollinate more frequently. So to go back to Tara's point about, like, how many times are we meeting with other, other grades, or how many times are we, you know, talking about fifth grade going to sixth grade, how many times are we doing some vertical articulation at the same time as we need to talk horizontally? I think our systems are helping with that. So that started with curriculum writing. So your point about can we label the standards and make sure that our teachers are hitting what they need to hit, the answer is that's what the curriculum writing, at least on the ELA social studies and science side right now is doing. And math side, it's a little bit easier, simply because the, the program ostensibly hits all of the standards, and the questions usually come with, are we spending enough time on, and using the materials that we have? So I think our systems are designed, again, to try to allow our good ideas to cross-pollinate and good practices to cross-pollinate. Your question about the why, I think, is a really deep and, and important one, because all of the systems that we have, it still comes down to trying to know the individual student. It still comes down to how much do I know about how Johnny or Sally is reading, writing, and understanding math, and how much do I know about Johnny as a whole, whole child? So I think everyone here so far has kind of hit on the same kind of paradigm for that, that we all want to talk about the whole child, and I don't know if I have an answer for the why for everyone yet, but I do know that the fact that our team together has decided to make more common practices across the building is an important one. And I think that's a conversation that, that started, I think, with these conscientious principals and administrators. When they, when we, when we, when it came in last year and we talked about it, they said, okay, we could do X, Y, Z. And they're leading that implementation now. And, you know, I'm really excited for the team that we've assembled, and I'm excited to keep building the systems, because I can tell you, we have such talented teachers here and such talented students that I really want to see that talent borne out in the results.
I, I appreciate that, and I don't, I, I mean, I hate to be like, you know, my usual self, that I always am, but I just, I don't know, I just, potential to me is, it's such an important thing, and I know the potential this district has, and I really think if we, if we dig into the why, what is going on there, not just what are we not doing, but the why, I think we'll get the answers, and I think it'll come. I mean, I also, just, you know, looking back at past performance, like, pre-COVID, the, the numbers have obviously gone down, they've gone down across the board. That's not to say we're the only ones who have. COVID had an impact on our children's learning, but, you know, I think as that has happened, as the students have changed, they are very different human beings in the classroom today, just how, you know, how are we changing as professionals to meet their changing needs? Like, what are we going to do differently moving forward, you know, to, to get there?
I, I think you're starting to see some of the things that we're doing to go forward. I think the thing that I'm excited about is that anytime we get in the room with the teachers and with the building principals, we come up with, with good ideas, too, things that make sense. So, you know, we had our reading and math teachers in for a, a training in here today, and the consultant came to us afterwards and said, I've never been, this is the, the fourth time that he happened to be with the reading and math teacher, not this year, but over two years, and he said, I've never been able to get to this higher level with such talent, with, with teachers before. And he said, you have a very talented staff, you have very talented administrators, and that, I mean, Samantha and Nicole were in the room when we were talking about that, and that just makes us excited to keep, to keep pushing and to keep making sure that our potential is filled, is fulfilled.
Thank you, and I do appreciate everything. I appreciate your care, I appreciate your effort, and I appreciate everything, so I don't want my, my words to, to mask that.
Can I just also say that, you know, we had the same people, the same superintendent for many years, and, you know, we've gone through a lot of change in this district, and last year, we had a whole new administrative team, so to speak, we've had new principals come in, and, you know, I'm the biggest cheerleader for this school district, I think you all know that. I love working here, I love being a part of this.
And we love you, too.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Citizen Taxpayer, thank you. I can honestly say that in all of the years, last year was the starting point, now we're really doing the hard work, and actually, that's what Mr. Gavin said, you know, this is the year of hard work. And I, I will tell you, I will, I'm confident in saying that I would say, this year, next year, you're going to see a change in results, you're going to see us moving up, and my running joke to Mr. Gavin was Rockville Center, back in the game, and I feel like we really are back in the game. I've never done, you know, last year when they came on, we were like, oh my God, this data, this data, and we joked that Dr. Moriarty was the data queen. There's something to be said about that, because that data is really helping us to drive and inform instruction, and I think that the camaraderie and the alignment that we all have with each other and with central office is really genuine, and there's this excitement about it, and I think that excites the teachers, and you will really see what you, what you're hoping for, what we're all hoping for, our students to really show excellent growth in the future.
So just to wrap this up, thank you all again for being here. I just took a couple of notes while you were giving the presentation, and I think it's a nice conclusion to what we've heard, both from board members and from the administrators. I know that this is a snapshot of what you all do every single day, so you're here sharing these stories, and I know you could be here for many more hours just telling us, you know, everything that you do every minute of every day, as well as your staff. everything that you do every minute of every day, as well as your staff. I just wrote down some key terms, temperature check, assessing our current reality. Allows us to assess our students so that we can identify the action steps that make most sense. So that we can get where we need to be with that student and where we want to be. It's a culture of continuous improvement. I obviously see a very, very much a sense of a team mentality and it's very much appreciated that you're all here taking part in this. Um, a focus on student achievement and growth. And Mrs. Pascarella closed out by saying support and stretch. That's what we want for all of you, that's what we want for all of you. And most importantly, that's what we want for all of our students. So thank you so much for being here and I think you can go now.
Yeah, good night, good job, guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, have a great night, everyone.
You too, thank you. Items for discussion, policies. At stage one, we have eighty-two fifty, evaluation of the instructional program. We renamed it, at the last meeting, we changed the title to evaluation of the educational program. Any comments or questions?
Nope. Okay.
I, I, sorry, I had one quick comment.
Sure.
Um, board expects staff members to maintain a continual program of evaluation at every level. You, you were talking K-12, right? That's what we're implying there, every level? I just know in a few of our other policies, we identified K-12, I don't know if it's worth identifying. Only because I thought maybe it could be interpreted to mean like, not necessarily level of student. Like more like different departments or different, you know what I'm saying? Like just a little clarity there might help.
Sure, where do you think it would make most sense to insert it?
Every level, K to 12?
K, yeah.
But should we say pre-K to 12? Because we're technically, I mean, we're looking at that program as well.
So before to determine? Every level?
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Celebrity, you have that? Are we okay to move it forward with that addition?
Pre-K to 12?
Got it? Okay, are we okay to move it forward with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Currently at stage two, we have eighty-one ten, curriculum development, resources and evaluation. We made the edits from the last meeting. Any other comments or questions on eighty-one ten?
No.
Okay to move this?
Yes.
Thank you. Eighty-one twenty, request for part one hundred variance or part two hundred innovative program waiver from commissioners regulations. Okay to move this?
Yes.
Eighty-two ten, safety conditions and programs. We also had some edits that we had added in from the last meeting. Any other comments or questions on eighty-two ten? Okay to move this?
Yes.
Yes.
Eighty-two twenty, career and techni- technical occupational education. Also made some edits based on our conversation at the last meeting. Okay to move this?
Yes.
Eighty-two thirty, guidance program, counseling slash guidance program. I think we took out the guidance as per my request.
Counseling.
Everything okay, everyone okay with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay to move this?
Yes.
Eighty-two ninety, alternative school program. We removed a piece at the, in the beginning there.
Yep.
Everyone okay? To move this?
Yes, center.
Thank you. Eighty-three twenty, selection of library and audiovisual materials.
So I would make the recommendation, instead of saying the red line portion, instead of saying every school, say every secondary school.
Yeah, I had the same thought.
Well, so that, the language that's there actually comes right from the regulation, but that it doesn't indicate that it only applies to middle and high school. So just a way to change it would be every, every secondary.
Every secondary.
That would include middle and high school.
Okay to move it with that?
Move as amended.
Yes.
Thank you. Eighty-three thirty-one, controversial issues. No changes were made at the last reading, are we okay to keep moving this?
Yes.
Great. Currently at stage three, we have thirteen-ten, powers and duties of the board. Okay to move this?
Yes.
And sixty-five forty, defense and indemnification of board members and employees. Okay to move this as well?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Gavin, opportunity for superintendent.
Uh, thank you, President Barry. Um, as Mr. Raymar indicated, we did hold our first focus group this week. Um, when we introduced the survey at our last board meeting, we discussed holding focus groups with students to hear their perspectives on their school experience. A particular focus for the board and for the community was the idea of looking at transitions from middle school to high school and from elementary to middle school. On Wednesday, I met with ten of our sixth graders, along with Ms. Ramsey, our, our director of guidance, and Ms. McGinn and Mr. Boyatzis, the sixth grade counselor, to hear their thoughts on the transition to middle school. Uh, the group was a diverse group from rep, uh, and representing all of our elementary schools. And several takeaways emerged from this school. Number one, they were appreciative of the pizza we provided during their lunch. Second, um, our students felt, and this was what I walked away with, and I was so happy from not just the middle school perspective, but from the elementary perspective, our students felt supported in the transition by their elementary counselors. And students cited specific things like, our elementary counselor came in and we got to practice locks, like how to do a lock. And this was before they even had the opportunity to go up, um, and do orientation. They felt orientation, they enjoyed orientation and felt that it helped. Um, but they confused a little bit that they had the opportunity to visit and orientation. So we just want to make sure that that's clear in their mind about how many different times they got a chance to go. Um, they also felt extraordinarily welcomed by our middle school faculty and staff. Um, every one of them, we, one of the questions we asked was, you know, what, can you identify someone who may have helped you early on in, in the middle school experience? Every one of them identified a staff member, and here's the best part, an older student that either gave them advice or gave them help. Whether it was, hey, you should know that on the left-hand side are all the odd classes and on the right-hand side are all the even classes. Like those little small things that they got like from either an older brother or sister or a friend that might be an eighth grader or a seventh grader. That to me spoke volumes about the culture at the middle school, where the teachers are all out helping, the kids are all out helping. And overall, they really, really enjoy middle school. Here are the things they enjoy, they love switching classes, love it. They love the after-school activities that they get a chance to. Some of them talked about that they can't wait for inter-scholastic sports to start. Um, but really, the one thing that I told them that they can't do, they all asked and lobbied pretty hard to have their phones allowed in the middle of school. And we gave them a hard no. So, um, they asked for that. And the interesting thing that is going to be a tangible improvement for next year. They talked about how it was a little difficult to read the schedule as it came home in the summer. Because there's an alternating day schedule. So, uh, Ms. McGinn and Ms. Ramsey were all working together to make sure that that schedule comes home clearly. So that our next sixth grade has a, a little bit easier time trying to decipher what that all-day schedule looks like. So, nice and easy, came from the students, the students brought it to our attention, we're going to go fix it. So to me, that's the whole purpose of the focus groups. The eighth graders outside in the hallway were curious about the pizza and they wanted to know what, when do we get a focus group? Um, and so we're doing a focus group with our eighth graders about what kind of things they want to see prior to going to high school. So that's one of the next ones coming up. But prior to that, we're going to actually sit down with our ninth graders as well, as a focus group of our ninth graders and talk about their transition to the high school. So to me, it's, it's such a great opportunity to hear from our students directly about some of the experiences we've tried to create. To make sure that we can make them as useful and as enjoyable as possible. So I want to thank Ms. Ramsey who did a great job, you know, helping us put this all together. And Ms. McGinn, um, and Mr. Boyatzis, who were awesome during the, during the meeting, it was a lot of fun. Um, I also want to give kudos out to our guidance department. We are in the middle of college application season. Um, from November first, November fifteenth, they have processed twenty-seven hundred, um, applications thus far. So we know that still more are coming, but twenty-seven application, twenty-seven hundred applications, thank you for that, that's greatly appreciated. Um, last, uh, last meeting, we talked about, uh, the new strategic survey that we're going to send out. Tomorrow, there'll be a letter that goes out to the entire community from me that talks about the survey that's to come. Why are we asking, what are we asking about? And what, and what are we going to do with that information? So all those questions will be answered in the letter from me tomorrow to the community. So it'll go to the community and it'll go to our faculty members. On Monday, the link to the survey with a, a shorter message accompanying will go out as well. So that we can start collecting our data to hear about how do, what are the values our community and our teachers prioritize? How do we align our experiences that we create here with those values? How do we measure our success? And ultimately, what are the outcomes we're looking for? So I'm, I'm really excited for that. Um, we will definitely be able to share that information with the board as December and January come, come, uh, come closely. I don't even know what to say there, it's coming, so, all right, you're going to get it in December, January. So that, I wanted to touch base on that and that is my opportunity for superintendent.
Thank you. Opportunity for board members, Ms. Messier.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to start by congratulating all of our fall athletes on excellent seasons. Um, and I wish the best of luck to all of our varsity teams as they move through the playoffs. Big congratulations to our girls' cross-country team in capturing their division conference and county titles. And I wish them the best of luck this weekend at the state qualifiers. And the same to our girls' varsity soccer team. Congratulations on your victory over Garden City. And I wish you a lot of luck this weekend at the Long Island Championships. Um, I'm looking very forward to attending the middle schools Broadway review this weekend. Um, my daughter's performing in it, I don't, it will be exciting to see that, I have never been to the review, so I'm looking forward to it. Um, it sounds like it's going to be great. And, um, I just wanted to conclude with just a thank you. November is a time to really reflect on all that we are grateful for. Um, and I am really, truly very grateful to be part of this community. I'd like to express my heartfelt gratitude to our central administration. We are truly fortunate to have such a committed team guiding our district. To our faculty and staff, you are exceptional, thank you for your passion and dedication to the education and well-being of our children. To all of our caregivers, thank you for your trust, your engagement and your partnership. To the council of PTAs, thank you for your time, effort and dedication to bettering the district's academic program. And to our larger Rockville Center and South Hempstead communities, your support and collaboration are invaluable. Um, I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, I wish everyone a happy Veterans Day and Election Day is coming up, don't forget to vote, thanks.
Thank you. Mrs. Hackett?
Thank you to Dr. Diaz and our principals for coming tonight. Um, I think it was a good night to, uh, plug the Rockville Center Education Foundation event, which will come up in April, I think it's April sixth this year. Um, where they will honor, um, Darren Raymar, who we all love and he's a self-proclaimed cheerleader, but we do feel that way about him, he's great. And Dr. Brian Zouar, who's also been another, um, just pillar in our community and our district, so just wanted to put a plug in. The Rockville Center and Foundation, um, just put out their grant deadline, they do great things for our district, for our kids. All the money that they raise goes back to the children of this community. So please support the event and these two amazing honorees this year. I echo Mrs. Messier, I'm so excited for all of our fall athletes. I know we have, uh, I don't know if we've gotten an update on the varsity girls right now, but they're playing as we speak, like Mr. Gavin said. We have an exciting weekend coming up of sports. I was really excited to be there to watch the girls, um, win their title last night. They were very excited and it was well-deserved. I, I said to Mrs. Barry, when they got out of, off the bus, they have this kind of dance-like routine of how they get onto the field together. They're like in unison and it's just, if that doesn't speak to teamwork and just camaraderie, I don't know what did, but it was, it was great to see. Um, and also for our girls' cross-country team, so proud of them, division conference and county champions. So congratulations to them as well and good luck to all of our athletes still playing in their playoffs. Um, excited for all the musicals and plays coming up. I also wanted to thank the teachers for the parent-teacher conferences, uh, at the middle school and high school, I have mine coming up, so I haven't done it personally. But, um, we know it's extra time for our teachers, but I want them to know how much the parents are really enjoying that time with them. That six minutes apiece seems quick, but they're getting a lot out of it. And I think for the secondary parents, you just don't get as many touchpoints naturally with your teachers. Um, so giving this opportunity is, is really a big deal and it's being well-received. So I do want the teachers to know how much they're, they are appreciated for their time. Because, um, the parents that I've spoken to are just so happy to get that time. Um, and I, I'm also really excited about the open house on Monday because Southside High School is an amazing place. Um, Mr. Murphy, you helped make it so. Um, and your legacy is being continued with, under Dr. Walsh's leadership. And I just really want to encourage anybody in the community who's at that age, um, of looking at high schools to not count out Southside High School as one of your top, top high school choices in this community. It is a fantastic place, full of fantastic people and amazing opportunities. And our students are doing really well here. So I really hope that our community will come out and see all that we have to offer. And finally, I just wanted to say thank you to Mrs. Love. We had a great mental health and wellness committee meeting today. We've got great representation from around the district and parents and administrators. Um, we have our counselors on hand and I just know it's going to be an exciting year. So I won't spoil anything yet, but Mrs. Love will tell us in a future meeting about all the fun things coming up. But, um, your children's mental health and their wellness is definitely at the forefront of our, um, care and effort here. So I just wanted to make sure you knew that those meetings are happening, though we might not, um, report on everything that's going on. There's so, so much that's happening behind the scenes. So thank you, Mrs. Love and your committee. And, um, like I said, good luck to everybody and we'll see you soon. See you one more time before the holidays, yes.
It's two more times.
Thank you.
Well, we won't be able to speak.
Thank you. Mrs. Gruner?
Um, so I'll echo the sentiments before me and congratulate all of our fall athletes. Um, playoffs or not, it's a commitment, it's, you're there every day, after-school games, practices. Most people, most teams started in August, it's been, I mean, they, it really is a commitment and it's paid off regardless of the outcome of the season. Um, but to those in the playoffs, go Cyclones, like I would love to see everybody win. Um, and make sure to, those of you who are not seniors with your own car, make sure to thank your parents for driving you everywhere. Um, and also just to the fans, like it's been great to just see how many people turn out from the community. Um, to support all of our teams, it's not just parents and family members. So, um, it, it gives a great feeling to the community. Um, both plays, the same thing, that's, that's a labor of love as well to those involved, so good luck to everybody performing. Um, I also want to echo my thanks, I did get to have my parent-teacher conference at the high school. Um, most people I spoke to said it felt like speed dating. Um, but I think it's so nice to just have that like small moment to start building a relationship. Um, at, you can cover not that much, but you would be surprised how much you can cover in six minutes. Um, but to me, it was more about just seeing, meeting, um, knowing that we're in this together with our kids. Um, it was, it was very much appreciated, so thank you to the teachers for that. And also to the teachers who worked so hard on Parent U. It really was a fantastic night. I know it's hard to get out, there's so many things every night of the week, but, um, it was worthwhile. And so if it comes around again, I would encourage people to, to come. You don't even have to stay for every session, but if there's something that catches your attention or, um, something you want to know more about, it was, it was really informative and I appreciate that very much. And that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Downing?
Agreed, everything's been covered, but I will echo the thank you to Dr. Diaz and the principals. We certainly have work to do and we are well-positioned to do it, so thank you for that overview. I also want to thank, uh, Dr. Friling and the Chamber Singers for the entertainment provided at our last meeting. Um, thank you to the PTA council and all of the PTAs for hosting us as board members. To your recent, um, October meetings and to SEP as well, and for recognizing Board of Appreciation Week. We came around to the PTA meetings to explain the survey, which Mr. Gavin has talked about this evening. And the results of that are really important to us. And I, I really want to stress that we are listening and we want to hear from you. As a community member, as a parent, as a student, as a teacher, we really do appreciate the feedback and it helps us plan ahead. And I echo the thanks to all of the presenters who came to Parent University and all of the parents who attended, from the babysitters who helped out and our admin staff who helped run everything so smoothly and efficiently, very professional. Um, congrats also to all of our athletes on your season, there's just so much winning. I love to see all of the winning. So know that we are cheering you on. And best wishes to the cast and the crews of the middle school review and... And best wishes to the cast and the crews of the Middle School Review and the upcoming high school drama. Please do take these board members up on the invitation to the high school open house on November 6th. It's such a fun night here at the high school, where you've got different performing groups in different corners of the building. You've got students who are club members with tables, explaining to future students what sort of clubs and extracurriculars are available. So it's really such a vibrant picture of the community in this building, so I really do encourage everyone to come out for that on November 6th. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again to the PTA units and SEP for hosting us, the board members and members of our central office team at your October meetings. It was nice to get into the buildings and discuss our goals. It's been a very positive start to the school year, and we are looking to build on the momentum that we started last year as a team and continue the great work that lies ahead of us. I did run around at the last meeting to try to thank the Chamber Singers, but they were going out for the group photo, so just want to be on record again to also thank them for their beautiful song, not just for being here, but the meaning and the symbolism in terms of encircling us, and just, it was a really special moment, and we very much appreciate you taking time out of your night to be here. And to my fellow board members, I want to say publicly as well, I appreciate each of you, and doing this work is not easy, but doing it as a team up here, I'm honored to be by your side. So thank you. And what else? Best of luck to all of our student athletes and our despians contributing to that positive vibe. We are very happy and excited to support you this weekend, and hopefully longer than that. And that's about it. Oh, the open house, yes. I also encourage you to bring your younger children. It feels like yesterday, but I brought my kindergartner, and now she's here as a 10th grader, and it's something for them to look up to and look forward to and have a goal for their future. So everyone is welcome, not just the people that are close to coming to our school, but even our youngest students, and maybe even beyond. All right, thank you very much. Opportunity for visitors. The public is reminded to address questions or remarks to the board through its president is requested to refrain from making any direct references to students or staff members that could be considered critical of their performance or their character. Such references to individual students or staff members are inappropriate at a public forum and should instead be conducted in private conversation with appropriate members of the staff. The public is asked to state their name and address, and please limit your comments
Good evening, everyone. Jeff Greenfield, Citizen Taxpayer, UBA Court. Erica, don't ever apologize for being true to yourself. I never apologized for being true to myself. The agenda is, I've delved into the action items and want a little answers. What is this corrective action plan? Three on items for action. And the emergency transportation, what, why is it, how many kids are we transporting for that amount of money? And the reason why I ask is because it came to my attention after the last meeting that on the consent agenda, after public comment, you passed in there the teacher's contract. I think something as significant as that you should explain in some detail to the taxpaying public, especially how many years, how much, terms and conditions. I thought maybe the president or the, my friend, the president of the teachers' union would come here and thank you tonight. I don't know if it's a good sign or a bad sign that he doesn't come to thank the board for a new contract, but I think it'd be nice to tell the public about the contract.
The corrective action plan was presented at a public meeting prior to this, prior to being adopted, and it's attached to tonight's agenda online.
The details are attached?
The contract was approved at the last meeting. That is correct.
Okay.
The details are attached online for the corrective action plan.
Okay. And the contract is online also?
I don't believe it's online.
No, the contract is not on Robert.
Is it a MOU? Is it a memory in the vundis?
It's an MOU right now that's getting, you know, tweaked with all, by all of the attorneys and everything, so.
So it's signed by both parties?
Signed by both parties, approved by the board.
So can you tell us the details?
Yeah. Four years. 1.1% raised for four years. Those are the major details. We have, in terms of the, in terms of what we got back, we had more professional development, we had some different rules now for teacher attendance, and we added two steps for the last two years of the contract at 1% each.
What about insurance contribution?
They're contributing one more percent, excuse me, what was it again? One more percent this year, which brings us up to 22.5? 22.5.
It all sounds good to me. You should tell the taxpaying public that.
Thank you.
So I could say, good job.
Thank you.
And the bus transportation item?
The bus transportation, busing right now has been, we had, this one was a special education student that we needed to make different arrangements for, to make sure that that student was transported safely, so we had to go out and ask for different bids for this particular one, if I'm pretty sure that's the right one. So we need to do this, we need to get this child to school, and that's what we had to do.
So we're spending $30,000 for one kid for 30 days? Be cheaper to hire an Uber? So this issue came up also at the Lynbrook School Board meeting, where I'm also a tax, citizen taxpayer, and I asked something really, I thought revolutionary to everyone, why don't we cooperate with neighboring districts on one- or two-person transportation issues with respect to the same schools, so that we can both save money?
Go ahead. We do do that all the time.
They didn't do it.
We have, we have not been able to find anybody to help us with this particular transportation. It started off as a post responsibility. They were, they found that they were not able to transport the students, so we took it over. We tried to work with the few buses that we have on our own by trying to split up some of those routes. That wasn't working. That's why we had to go out with a temporary bid for 30 days, and now we have another bid out to try to do it for the remainder of the year, and we'll have to see what that comes back as.
And we only had one bidder, right?
On this one, yes.
All right.
I mean, the bus companies right now are stretched thin. It is a legit concern, not just for Rockville Center, but for superintendents all across this island. And not only is the concern the amount of drivers, but then it's the amount of attendants or aides that are on the bus, or nurses or students that might need a nurse on the bus. So there are a number of different things that have been, have created challenging conditions to transport some of our students.
I just hope we pursue more collaborative work with surrounding districts to save taxpayers in both this, all districts' money. Thank you all very much. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you likewise. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the financial reports as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the receipt of financial reports as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve items for action 1 through 6?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. The next meeting will be November 16th, and that will be a public works session. Have a great evening.[1768.08]